And I'll call this meeting to order. And anybody has a declaration of peculiar interest, they can declare it now or add later on. Number three will be a motion that we'll put on the floor, business arising from the minutes. I'll read that motion into the record. Whereas, section 6.1 of the conference and seminar procedure for county council members states that campaign expenses of county councillors running for office on municipal associations will be paid subject to the prior approval of county council. And whereas councillor Paul McQueen is running for the position of the board of director, county caucus with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, referred to as AMO, now therefore be resolved that campaign expenses up to $250 be reimbursed to councillor McQueen in support of his election to the county caucus of AMO upon the submission of proper receipts in support thereof, and that this be funded from the council operating budget. Put that on the floor. Councillor Greenfield, councillor Mackie, any discussion on the motion? Councillor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Fully support this. It kind of seems like a no-brainer. I just want to acknowledge the additional effort and initiative that council members choose to make in investing their time, and I think we should all be very grateful for that. And further, I think it would be good if, in general, we, as a group, were increasingly aware of opportunities that present themselves at various times throughout the year and throughout the election cycle. In particular, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, I think, is an important organization. It is higher level than we generally play. However, I do believe we bear the burden of speaking up. So I just wanted to make the point that there are lots of opportunities out there, and this group should be more actively participating. I would encourage that, and I would also encourage participation from our lower-tier council members to do what we cannot, because we're already quite busy as well. So I wanted to formally thank councillor McQueen for his contribution, and I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Councillor Bell, and then...
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Don't have any problem with the bylaw, just the 250 figure, where did it come from? And consultation with who? And what's it include?
I think the clerk can speak...
It's not a lot of money, just wonder why it's not 400, why it's not 100, just where does the 250 fall into?
Yep, and I can speak to it, and I spoke with the director of finance as well, and with councillor McQueen, and we all thought that that was a reasonable number to cover any expenses that would happen during this campaign.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions? That's councillor Echols.
So I guess the other question was, what was the past practice? What did we ever give before? Because there has been a number of people sit on various boards, whether it's Roma, Osom, County Caucus.
There have been. I'm not, I don't recall a time when we've actually had an election. That may have been under the clerk folks before that, that this was done, but in my recent history, I don't remember us having an election, having to pass this, so.
So, well, I can say that I, I guess maybe being around here, we have had a couple of elections, and I don't know whether this is just formalizing it, I guess, more than anything, because I think we did support a couple of members in the past.
Thank you, councillor Echols. And Kevin Weppeler, our director of finance, will make a comment.
My tenure, I recall that staff photocopying brochures and stuff like that, and using the council budget for that at times, but this is probably the first time I've seen something this formal put into place here.
Further comments? Councillor McQueen?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, for the opportunity to present this or to talk to this motion to county council. The only one I recall was an election was Harley Greenfield. I'm not sure how many years back, that may be two, maybe three terms, I think you were running for county caucus at that time, and I would say that maybe he would have some information, what it costs. I know you did sort of a flyer brochure type thing, and that type of thing, but as far as generally with my past being on AMO, and I think prior to that was Duncan McKinley, I don't think there was election. Hasn't been election for a little while, they're looking for bodies, and I know last time that was short. This time it happens before for three spaces. So, you know, it's basically all I'll be doing is just either a flyer, or a brochure, or something, or a one-page flyer with maybe a card or something like that, so. And I'm sourcing out, there was an email came out from AMO that if I want a list of all the names, it's going to cost me $30. So, it's a list of all the county councillors that are available, so, other than do my homework or pay 30 bucks, I guess that's one expense that could be from that 250, so.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call the vote on this. All in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you very much for that. So we're now moving into the consent agenda, and put this on the floor, that the following consent agenda items be received, and that staff be authorized to take actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports, and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. First being that the minutes of the Tourism Advisory Committee meeting dated July the 5th, 2008... Should I read this? I don't have to read this, thank goodness. Thank you. Anybody want to pull any items from the consent agenda? Councillor McQueen?
Yes, I do have a question on item F, the green Ontario, green on social housing program cancellation.
You want to pull it, or do you just have one quick question?
Well, you're the chair, so you decide.
The clerk says, "Pull it."
Okay.
Okay. So that's the protocol. Councillor Fosbrook?
I would like to very briefly comment on two items, and do I need to pull them?
Technically, yes.
Fine, so A and B.
A and B?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, fine, so we've pulled those, and they will be dealt with later on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, and so, put the motion on the floor to accept the remaining ones as part of... Oops, sorry, councillor Echols.
So moved.
Oh, so moved.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Seconder, councillor Hicks. Okay, all in favor of that motion? That motion is carried, and we move on to items for direction and discussion. First being that report FRCW 1918 regarding a corporate financial update and year-end projection as of May the 31st, 2018 be received. And our director of finance, Kevin Weppeler, finance and corporate services, whatever. Thank you, Kevin.
We need a mover and a seconder.
We need a mover and a seconder to make this happen. Councillor Burley, councillor Mackie, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. This is our first report on a financial update for the 2018 year, and this is based on May 31st, 2018. So what I intend to do here, if council's all right, I was just going to go through and highlight some of the items, and there's some items here that I am going to highlight that I'm going to call upon my colleagues here to speak to as they have more information on, but they're items I think that council should be aware of and give them some information. So, first, overall, based on in the May, and looking at projection of items to come yet and expenses to be incurred, we're looking at a projected year-end surplus of about $311,000. In saying that, that $311,000 in surplus is taking into consideration that council's already approved the use of any surplus or any, or surplus isn't garnered in the transportation services budget, that the overages on the capital tenured projects will be funded from the gas tax funding reserve. So without the gas tax funding reserve, you'd be sitting here looking at, you know, a $678,000 deficit in essence, but I wanted to clarify that, that we've incorporated the gas tax into that surplus projection at this time, okay? So how we go about this is each department, between directors, managers, and finance staff, we look at those May 31st, we look at what's even been spent in June, and we look at our budgets, and then we base on expenses yet to occur. Administration, we've had a number of staff changes and vacancies. For example, myself has moved, we've had a clerk, and then we've had other positions that are asset management coordinator, and all those haven't, either have been filled just lately, or they still remain vacant, so we're having surpluses garnered there in the budget. I have about $50,000 in investment yields that are higher that we're projecting. Now, on the capital side there, there was a report here on the infrastructure refresh that showed it was, that tenure came in over, it's about $65,000 over, so the net of that is about $93,000, a positive variance. Council, our projection is we'll be on budget by the end of the year. Information services, they intend to be on budget at the end of the year. We did have some savings on the Microsoft 365 that was brought here. A big portion of that was funded from reserves, so the transfer from reserve will be reduced, and so it will not show any surplus at the bottom line. Weekly indemnity and workers' compensation are our self-insured plans. The weekly indemnity is projected to end the year on budget. The workers' comp, we're projecting right now, based on the claims we have, and anticipating some of these claims are going to be a longer period of time before these individuals return. We're projecting a deficit of about $158,000, and then as also, there were some claims from, that were appealed from previous year that have come back and been successfully appealed, so we're having those. I wondered if Grant would like to comment on anything on the workers' comp and those claims.
Welcome, Grant.
Thanks, Kevin, Mr. Warden. So Kevin really just kind of talked a little bit about a few claims that we're having. PTSD is new to WSIB, and as Kevin was saying, these claims are not often quick to return. That is increasing our costs for WSIB. You also have an opportunity, if you're declined in WSIB, to appeal to the board, and as you might anticipate, it takes quite a while for those appeals to go through the process. A couple of employees have been successful in their appeals. So although we're saying that we're looking at a bit of a deficit, I think it's important for county council to understand that for the homes, for instance, for our WSIB, we're currently only charging 45% of what it would be if we were a Schedule I employer. So again, that's a savings of 55% surplus deficit. EMS is 57% of what we would be charged if we were in Schedule I, and the same with all of the other employees. Saying that, we have, we've saved significantly over, still over $2 million in the last seven years, having, going to Schedule II, reducing those rates, and trying our best to keep people at work. Without getting into specific claims and names and so on, that's really the reason for this. I see PTSD being a major cost driver for municipalities, yours and ours, and that's something that we're going to have to look at.
Thank you for those comments. Any questions? Councillor Mackie first, and then councillor Echols.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Grant, in regards to PTSD, are you expecting in our long-term care centers that there'll be a number of claims coming through under PTSD?
I think that currently we are leading off with our first responders. Not to say that we don't have similar situations in the homes for the aged, and that's something that we just can't predict, but the PTSD is going to be used, just as 20 years ago stress was used, as something to get off on WSIB, and I think we will see that in the future.
Thanks for that.
I guess my question with the number of assaults that are occurring, or potentially occurring with the, you know, the increased clientele that's being brought into our long-term care facilities, that I suspect there'll be more claims from PTSD in long-term care.
One of the issues with the long-term care is we're, you know, as you know, and we've had a lot of reports, our clientele is becoming quite different, and it is a trend that we're having people who have more behaviors, and again, it's something that we're trying our best to deal with.
Thank you. Councillor Echols, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess specifically, is it, we've noticed that we've got a deficit, so it's an increase in the WSIB cases, and to be specific or particular, is it long-term care? Is it first responders? Is it our, you know, public works?
So the appeals that have gone through, thank you, those appeals are homes for the aged, and the PTSD is EMS, first responders.
So those are the two that we're seeing the increase, and obviously have to take things into account to try and alleviate or put programs in place to be like a better supportive workplace.
One of the things that we have done, and I know that Kevin McNab here is working with human resources on a peer support team, we're also working with Dr. Lori Gray to get some training in there, and I think that we're way ahead of other municipalities in regards to our capacity building and trying to get these people back into the workplace, but it's a very slow process. I'm sorry, I think our...
Yes, our CEO would like to comment as well.
Just to be clear, when the province changed the legislation so that the presumptive aspect of it, so it's assumed that first responders, that the PTSD is work-related. Earlier this year, that was extended to nursing staff who directly provide patient care.
Thanks for that. Thanks. Oh, councillor Fosbrook has a question?
Thank you, Dan. Just briefly, at the bottom of the paragraph, it talks about if year-end projections are correct and this deficit realized, the applicable reserve could be utilized to offset this shortfall. So what is the applicable reserve? How much is in it? And how confident are we that it's sufficient to not have to worry about long-term risk?
There is a W, there's a specific WSIB reserve, and the last time I looked at it was just over $3 million sitting in that reserve. So there was a payout, or when we assumed all these costs, there was a funding supply come back from WSIB at that time, and it was, at that time, directed by council, put into WSIB reserve, knowing that we would be really self-insuring these plans go forward. And if we were ever to go back to being a Schedule I, that funding there would also be used then to finish off those claims that we'd be responsible to until all the new claims were picked up by the Schedule I being back in your typical WSIB environment. Okay.
So if I may, $3 million, I mean, one good claim could wipe you out. You'd know better than me. Are we putting enough on the shelf?
Yeah, we have an actuarial done every year as part of our audit, and he looks at the, at that reserve, and we were, at that point, 125% funded of what he was projecting, any of those claims extended out over their life, so he was saying that we were in a good position at that point in time. Every year, HR will though look at these plans, and will adjust our rates based on what we're seeing in our history, and so you'll see that comes through in the budget, the impacts going through. Okay.
One of the other things to guard against that is we do have stop-loss insurance, and a single claim would likely get to us, to a point where we would get into the insurance coverage.
Thanks for that. Thanks, Grant. Kevin, continue.
I'll continue on. Assessment, we're looking at a small deficit, about $18,000, and the way that the bills from MPAC are, they're shared amongst the provinces, is based on your portion of assessment and your proportion of properties, and we're just seeing a bigger, higher proportion coming to the County of Gray than what the Gray, what county staff had estimated, so difference about $18,000. Provincial offenses, we're looking at a small surplus of about $40,000. Our revenues are higher as of the end of the May, which is a good sign for, we've had a number of years here where it's been less than that. It's another budget, it's, we've got salary and benefit lines that are lower right now due, we're looking to hire paralegal and stuff for those operations. Some of those savings are being offset, though, because we're continuing our contracted service with our prosecution service with Middleborough, so. But overall, if things remain the same, we're projecting about a $40,000 surplus, but again, revenues in that operation are out of our control, so we'll have to see.
Yes, councillor Fosbrook, on that section?
Yeah, on that point, we don't talk about this segment much, if at all. Why not, and when will we?
That's a good question, I guess. When things, I guess, we try to present each financials about our revenues and stuff. If there's something significant change, I'm sure it'll be brought forward here. I believe, too, once we hire a director of legal and stuff, things like that, you'll get more information as well, but maybe CEO would like to comment.
And just to clarify, I appreciate that, you know, we're getting financial overview, but, you know, we have discussions every now and again about the implications of what goes on with provincial offenses, and I just wonder, at some point, is there going to be broader, more in-depth discussion about that segment, and what influence we may or may not have as a result of the structure?
Go on, um...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry.
We don't talk about it much.
Another recent...
And I'm not, I'm not, can you help me to understand what sort of information you might be looking for?
So, so what is our jurisdiction? What is our mandate? What is our authority as relates to provincial offenses? Because we don't talk about it, and I'm not really sure whether that's by design, that it's arms-length, or that we just choose not to talk about it.
I think it's likely very much the latter. Provincial offenses really reports back through the attorney general for the province of Ontario, and we always need to be very careful that there's a clear separation between the day-to-day administrative functions of the court and the prosecution and legal side. So Gray County's responsibility, and we have that responsibility as well on, with, for the County of Bruce, is to provide the court function, to make sure that, from an administrative perspective, that, that delivery of justice can happen in an appropriate manner, so that the cases are scheduled, the police know when to appear, the defendants know when to appear, that the briefs are appropriately created. That's the county staff who work in provincial offenses court, that's what they do, is just to create a structure so that cases can be heard and dealt with.
And what is our role in oversight as council?
I think to make sure that the court has the appropriate resources to carry out its mandate through the annual budget. But when it comes to how justice might be delivered to individual defendants and that sort of thing, we don't, we don't get involved in that at all.
Okay, so as an example, there's been numerous discussions about the inability to collect outstanding fines. That's just one example of things that have been brought up, and again, I'm just not clear on if this is within the purview of the county, and I sit here as a county council member, what is my role? What is my duty? Should we be looking at more frequent reports, updates, or is this simply enough that here's the budget, we met it, we're done?
The challenge, I think, we face is that we're really bound by provincial legislation. There was a discussion at one point that the province was going to change the regulations so that people were bound to pay their oldest fines first and work their way forward. Right now, plate denial is in place, and so if someone wants to renew their license, and they have a specific outstanding ticket related to a driving offense, they'll have to settle up with that. They may have other tickets that are unrelated specifically to driving, those don't come into consideration. When the government changed, that legislation had not made its way through the entire process, so it died on the table. I, it's probably very much too early to decide whether or not bringing that back will be a priority to this, to this government. But as it stands right now, the change that they were able to put through was that when people go to Service Ontario to renew their license, if they have outstanding driving-related fines, they can simply pay them at Service Ontario rather than coming here and then going back there. But Service Ontario charges $20 out of the revenue that we could have expected for providing that service, so essentially it's a service enhancement to the driving public, but it did have a very small negative impact on the county's revenue.
I thank you for that. I'm going to summarize and say that I think it would be appropriate, in my opinion, if this council received some regular reporting in writing that summarized what we should know, and, you know, was clear, that this is the stuff that you should be discussing, that you can consider discussing at higher levels, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. Councillor McQueen?
Thank you, Warden Halliday. I just, kind of along that line, is how much of difficulty would there be in, I know it lists the county as a whole for prosecution, but is it possible to break out each municipality individually as to what tickets are generated in each municipality? The reason why I ask this question is, in our municipality, we have two sets of truck scales, and, you know, the appropriate officers to run them and issue the tickets, and, you know, as a, the ability to, for Gray County to protect their road system, and just wondering if other municipalities, if those numbers would bear out, that it actually is a benefit to the county to have those in other, in all other jurisdictions. I don't know how big a job that'd be for staff to give that out, as a, you know, break it out per municipality, to see if there's some trends that we could use.
Thanks, Sean, because that is important, as you've invested in...
There have been some discussions about truck scales. I'll talk to Pat and...
Right.
They don't want it to take a lot of staff time. I'm just wondering if we could see a trend that, you know, that municipalities that have this level of expertise could actually be a benefit to the county and protect the system.
Right, okay, thanks. Good input. Any other questions of Kevin on that particular section? Okay, Kevin, we can move along.
Health unit and other funding initiatives, notable here is the, there's about a surplus of about $25,000 from the health unit. That was a result of the vector-borne disease cost share program, which the province has cut. It went from 272,000 down to about 101,000, so our cost share in that is, that, being that program being reduced, and our cost share portion of that being with Bruce and county and ourselves, is an anticipated surplus of $25,000. The rest of the programs there with, are really just transfers for Georgian College to the Gray Bruce Health Service and stuff, and those are being made, and they're on budget based on agreements we have that were passed by bylaw, so. Property, which is the amended POA in Morrison Buildings, projected to have an overall surplus of about $37,000. We've seen savings in hydro, cleaning supplies, and salaries. The addition and the alterations project is, I've shown what the work has been completed there, as of the end of June, was $10,434,000, or about 96% of the contract price, and currently, including the holdback remaining to Devlin, is we have $628,000 to be yet provided to them, but we're, and, but we, currently we appear to be on budget with that project.
Any questions on that? Seeing none, move on. Thanks.
Supplementary taxation, tax write-offs, haven't provided any year in position, we get those later in the year, and I contact each of the local municipalities for their projections on that, so we'll get those later in the year. Planning, planning's projecting to have a surplus of about $120,000. Again, Randy's department's had a number of staff vacancies and changes, people going off on parental leave earlier than anticipated, et cetera, so, and plus the application revenues are already exceeding the budget, so I guess that just speaks to the development that's going on. Another notable here that was asked to be raised, and maybe if I have to get Scott, because he can speak to this better than I can, but the Sogging Valley Conservation Authority, recent decision to withdraw from providing municipalities with comments on natural heritage-related matters, along with natural hazard comments for areas... along with natural hazard comments for areas outside of the SVA's regulated area or screening area, may have an impact when planning needs to have comments provided by someone on that issue that we might have to contract someone in for that work. So, do you have any comments on that, Scott?
Thanks, Scott.
Just briefly, at this stage, this is a bit of an unknown in, in the planning budgets, perhaps for this year and maybe even more so for next year. With the Conservation Authority's recommended withdrawal of services on, on providing natural heritage comments, we may need to look at how we're going to fill that gap. I know other municipalities are looking at going out to contract on that. So we'll certainly be in, in contact with some of our neighbors. Or we may need to look at something in-house in terms of having that expertise. Randy has a teleconference scheduled with Conservation Authority staff and, and, I think, a board member tomorrow. So we will bring forward a future report to, to this committee in terms of recommended next steps in that regard.
Thanks, Scott, for that update. Any questions, Scott?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Scott, did we not receive, or I thought I remember reading something that Sogging was going to have a fee for service for the heritage studies? Was, is that not accurate?
So through the Warden, so the Sogging Valley Conservation Authority had proposed a memorandum of understanding to look at what services they would offer above and beyond sort of their core mandate, which is natural hazard. They had said that they were looking at getting out of the natural heritage comments unless there was demand amongst the county and municipal tables for those services. And some municipalities, the county included, passed a motion to suggest that, yes, we would like that service. But my understanding is the most recent discussions with Conservation Authority are still that they would, they would get out of that altogether. You know, depending on what comes out of tomorrow's talks, if, if there is an option whereby we could still contract individual review services in that regard, that, that would certainly be something to investigate further.
Thanks. Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you. So just to further clarify, is there, or do we anticipate a gap? Or is this still, we're determining what they won't do, and then we will have some buffer to address an alternative?
At this stage, we don't know the timeframes for, for when they look to implement that decision, if that decision is, is made final. If, if they are moving forward with, with not offering those services, our recommendation will be that we have some sort of interim period, whether it be six months or longer, whereby they still offer those services such that municipalities and counties can, can find their feet in that regard. Because if, if, if they shut the tap off immediately, we would be left without those review services. But certainly, we're, we're in touch with Bruce County as well, who's, who's potentially facing some of the same issues. And we're going to look to hopefully find a solution.
Well, thank you for that. And part of the reason I mention it is because I'm starting to see in SVCA comments on developments where they're acknowledging that, okay, we don't have the staff expertise to deal with this. So although it would seem that we're not in that implementation, you have to find a solution yet, in, in, in practice, I think we are to a degree. So I'm, I'm just cautious that it seems like what we've kind of known all along, that the expertise of the SVCA has limitations, that certainly it's going to become more real. But in, in, in this period that we're in right now, it would seem that we're getting these acknowledgements, we just need to make sure that we're clear when they give us their comments and say, that category, we're not covering. So I'll just continue to look forward to the updates on that.
I don't think they've withdrawn their services, so at this point in time. Counselor Barfoot?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Just through you to Scott. Scott, can you just clarify your statement earlier that who Randy was having the call with tomorrow? Is it all the Conservation Authorities or just Sogging?
My understanding tomorrow's call is, is just with Representative Sogging.
Oh, okay, all right, because, as I said. Yeah, no, that's fine, because I think, you know, we need to decide moving forward if, what do we deal with? Four Conservation Authorities?
Yes.
Like, we need to decide if one decides they're going to not do that service and the others are, then I look forward to the report coming back as far as from a costing perspective, you know, who's going to pick up that other part? It shouldn't be, the county shouldn't be picking that up. But anyway, I look forward to the report.
That'd be an interesting debate as we move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on Conservation Authorities? Okay, thanks, Scott. Yes, Kevin?
Next is agriculture. Agriculture budget currently is on, on budget. And the Beaver and Cootie expenditures are lower at this point in time. So if that trend continues, there may be a surplus being projected in a future update. Forestry, based on the May financials, we're projecting a deficit there of about $30,000. And it's lower than anticipated revenue from the tender of harvest. I, I know Randy and his staff are, and purchasing are, are planning to, and have had discussion and plan further discussions with, with the vendors or the forestry people. And they're looking, is there something we can do differently with our tenders? The timing when we release those tenders and, and things like that, to get more bids and, and higher bids. Again, we're not sure with NAFTA and all the things that are going on there, if that's what's causing some of this price reductions that we're seeing on the bids, et cetera. But they are, staff is working with the industry, trying to see if they can do anything to improve our results, et cetera.
Thanks for that.
There's comments there about they're still working with the NEC on, on that One Forest Track to see if they can get it approved and possibly could do a harvest on that. But that's still a work in progress. Trails anticipated end of the year on budget. They did have a capital project that it was awarded and came in under budget, but it was being funded from reserves, so no, wouldn't result in a surplus. Economic development, based on projects and plans, they believe they'll end the year on budget. Business Enterprise Center is on budget. And they're planning to spend and fulfill the provincial agreements they have there for those three programs of funding that sources they have. The Community Hub, you're well aware of where we're sitting with it. So it's, right now, that reserve funding that was put in there is, may not be fully utilized in 2018, we're not sure. Connected community budget, there was 200,000, I guess, in seed money. If something resulted out of the SWIFT program where we could join on to a cap, a construction project and extend it out into our community, that we would have money in the budget to do that. Currently, we have not, have not seen any projects identified, so that money is not, has not been utilized at this point. Tourism currently is under budget, about 20,000. But a lot of their activities are in the summer with their students, et cetera. And as well, they've had some staff changes with the long-term employee retiring. And there was a bit of a gap there in filling that vacancy. And so, but they're, so they're anticipating just a small year in surplus of about $8,000. Gray Roots, they're anticipating operating the capital budgets within the year on, on budget. Much of Gray Roots is revenue is seasonal. And it'll take some months here to analyze where they're at. But there's some good news there with their kid camp being sold out. Education programming, membership and donations are up at this point in time compared to, to budget. So it's, it, they're, they're looking good right now. So we'll see how the summer goes, and we'll, we'll report back in the next financial update with, with that. Ontario Works, small surplus of about $20,000. Again, it's some staff, staffing that's gone on there with the salaries and benefits for contract staffing being lower than had been budgeted. Childcare here, childcare, we're only looking for about $7,000, I think it's $7,400 surplus. But there's an important item in here that I, and I'll have Barb help with this one. But we've, we've been, the province has provided in expansion funding and early learning childcare funding, a significant amount of funding to the County of Gray to expand daycare. But we're struggling to expend this funding. And I'll let Barb speak to this, okay?
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So we have been here a number of times this year with a number of agreements, a lot of change, and a lot of money being allocated to us. So we are currently working with our providers very closely to determine what their potential growth looks like, where they could use it. There were parameters with the funds. If you didn't use it in 18 for some of the funds, you could transfer into 19 others. You did have to maximize the use or it goes back. So it's, it's a bit of a shuffle for us to ensure that we're, we're meeting the needs of those providers. And looking at community, we have our, our data analysis coordinator, the planning data analysis coordinator doing an analysis right now on projections for growth, where those families will be, working with the centers, identifying what the needs are. Because there are needs, whether or not they are actually given approval by the ministry to, to increase the number of children they can have in their center. What needs to happen prior to that is the work. They have to expand their building, they have to change their rooms to make them fitting for infants, toddlers. Those are dollars we can assist with, with the funds that we currently have. So it takes a lot of work to get to that point, and we are mid-year. So there's been a lot of things moving, moving parts, I would say. So we'll, we'll be bringing you back a map of where we see that growth, how we are working with those providers. Children Services themselves have had a number of turnovers. We have had many retirements within that small group. So we've got new staff, there's been training going on. And we're recruiting for more home childcare providers, because we have a lot of people that work shifts. And our, our centers don't necessarily meet the needs of families who are on shift work. So we know that that home childcare, that can, group of folks are very vital to us to ensure that we can take those infants and we can take those children, and some of them are overnight even. So again, there's a lot of campaigning going on and work behind the scenes. So does anyone have any questions?
Any questions of Barb on childcare programs?
I am back in Toronto on Tuesday. This is, there's been a quiet period, of course, everybody's experiencing that. But we were called as the 47 leads to meet with the Assistant Deputy Ministers of various programs, Children Services being one. So I expect to have some information in the very near future of what this looks like. We, we don't, our, our concern is that we were given all this money, we want to spend it, but is, is it for sure our money to spend? So that's the other piece of making sure that we have that information behind us.
That's good, prudent. Yes, Kevin, thanks.
I'm still here, like, I know even trying to get ECEs, et cetera, has been a challenge. But I, the reason I wanted this flagged in this report is that, you know, if you have residents that are complaining they can't access childcare because they can't find places, and then we're complaining to ministry, and the ministry says, well, Gray County received $2 million worth of funding to expand childcare, that just is an argument that looks opposite to each other. So we wanted to identify, you know, if we can't find a way or someone to step up and fill this and needs, that ministry, money could be clawed back from the ministry, because we've, we wouldn't have eligible expenditures then. But we wanted to bring it to your attention, that the problems we're having of trying to utilize that funding, so.
Okay, thanks on that. Counselor Fosbrook has a question, so.
So if, if the message is, if you're interested in providing what I might describe as alternative hours daycare, here's the information you need to know, right? Is there a one page we can link to to say, hey, FYI?
Yes, we do have, we've got a Facebook link, we've got lots of policies and procedures, and we have staff downstairs ready and willing to have those conversations. We are, they're licensed, so they are, there's a lot of work that goes through to make them licensed and to keep them licensed. And it's almost, the workload that happens with our staff is almost like inspections. They, they are inspectors and they have to ensure adherence. But we are encouraging that, absolutely. So if you have someone that is interested in working with us, we'd more than be happy to work with them. The challenge Kevin referenced was the registered ECEs. So some of our folks have already gone to the ministry, and they've asked to increase the number of children they can work with. And once they're granted that on their license, they still may have trouble filling those positions, because the Board of Ed steals them. They, it's, it's a higher pay, they have a different kind of workload. And so the Board of Ed has before and after care, they've got the early learning programs, the JKs. They've got staff that are registered early ECEs as well. So it's, it's hard to sustain. The other piece that we're finding is that the ministry, so at the ministry level, where they, our staff, our students have gone through, they've completed their education, there's a delay in getting their registration to the college. At the same time, in order to be hired for these programs, they have to be registered with the college. So that delay is playing a little piece in this. So we're advocating at our level on that, too.
So what I'm hearing is that we can help increase awareness, that you're going to deal with the bureaucracy as much as you can, and that if you hit a wall with the bureaucracy, you're going to let us know what we can do about it?
You bet. Yes.
Have I got it?
You got it. And, and so it's exciting times, because again, it's a lot of money. And, and we see a great opportunity. And what we're, what we're looking at is where are those growth spaces? What does that look like? And so planning has been so helpful with collaborating with us and really looking deeper, doing that deeper dive as to, you know, where, where are those kids and how can we project that? So we can get in front of it and make those changes in advance.
It does occur to me that our new Minister of Education isn't so far away. And, you know, all this discussion about silos and whatnot. If we need to elevate the discussion about, you know, the left hand, the right hand, and how we can work better together, I'm sure you'll make sure we know, right?
We will. We collaborate regularly, I'm going to say weekly, with our neighbors in Bruce County. Because our families don't see the boundaries. They may live in Waukurdin but work in Hanover and bring the children to a Hanover center. We may have someone living in Owen Sound and taking kids to Wyerton where they work. So we do, we, we work almost hand in hand, and we try very hard. As much as we have a different type of service, we try really hard to make that service available to families and parents in a consistent manner. They work very closely with that particular lead, and we will be, we're, we're going to benefit from that, from having that relationship.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks. And Kim would like to have a few words.
I just, I just want to note for staff that when the, when the province changed the, the rules to bring the younger children into school, and there became a need to have registered staff in, in the classrooms, which was different. I think we're, we found ourselves in a situation across the province where there was suddenly a net new need for registered staff that simply hadn't existed before. So as that kind of shakes itself out at the college that registers ECEs is having to play a bit of catch-up, I don't want anybody to take from the comments that the Board of Education is doing anything other than what they should be doing, which is getting the registered staff into schools that they're required to have. It's just that right now, there aren't enough ECEs to go around. And we need to be working with Georgian College and all of our partners to try and, and fill that gap, which is probably more acute in a rural community.
Thank you, Kim, for that clarification. That's exactly correct. We're, we're not finding that it's any ill on anybody's part, it's just a conundrum, and we're in that position.
Counselor Eccles, you have a comment or a question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Where's the blur, then? Is the Board of Education in education? Or are they in childcare, daycare? As you said, people coming from across the boundaries, going from town to town, looking for daycare and in these licensed facilities. But where's the blur? Or can you lift the fog off of me? I'm trying to figure out who's crossed the line on where education is and where child daycare is.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for that question. That is a fantastic question, and it's, it's not.
Thank you. Don't come up with that very often.
It's, it's not a blur, as so much as a continuum of learning. So in 2013, up until 2013, childcare programs were under the purview of the Ministry of Child and Youth. They transferred then to the Ministry of Education, because they could see that the benefit of the child being connected to school at a very early age changes that trajectory of where that child can be at the end of grade 12. So having the three-and-a-half-year-olds, that early learning piece where JK and SK was now entrenched in, in legislation, moving those folks through to that point really changed how we were going to do childcare. Because predominantly, those, those preschoolers were the, that was the level where a childcare center could make more money and be sustainable. It's more expensive to have infants and toddlers than it is for the preschoolers. So now those kids are in school. So it changed the landscape somewhat as well. So while they're in school, those kids now can, the, our ECEs are required by the Board to, because they have particular needs. A child that's four and three is different than a seven and an eight-year-old. So that early learning development piece was very important to, and, and education accepted that. As well, our ECEs are also being used at the Boards to support children with special needs. So again, as Kim mentioned, it became kind of a, a demand that happened before the supply could catch up to it. And so we're also now in.
And so we're also now encouraging with additional funds for families that want to work and could be participating to be in community. It's, it's important for kids that are referred, that have special needs, and lots of referrals come in where it's from a doctor or from public health or from another agency that says this child would benefit from being in a center a couple days a week, reprieve for the parent, but, you know, there's lots of reasons why. And again, it's about that early learning component and being connected. The other thing that we're doing is working closely, and you'll see, most of the childcare centers are in school settings now. And that brings the family to the school at an earlier age and as well connects them with services that maybe they couldn't get before. So there's a lot of good things happening, it's just, it's, it's kind of one of those what came first and how do we get back on track? Does that help?
Good, good response. Good exercise in updating, thank you. Yes, councillor Mackie.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Barb, just wondering, are the pay grids much different between the school board and what the county offers? Is that why we're losing some?
They are. Thank you for that question as well. My last knowledge, and this is just off the top of my head, I don't have the figures in front of me, but there's about a seven to eight dollar difference, depending on which center you work for and which board you work for. And then there is, you know, once you're in the door with the Boards of Ed, they have their continual grids, whereas sometimes it's difficult for the centers that are independent and trying to operate to manage the same kind of level of increase. It's a big difference.
I lifted some fog for councillor Eccles. Yeah, it's the name out there, okay. Thanks, Barb. Keep, keep us posted on that. Yes, councillor Fosbrook.
So to me, that's kind of the point. Like, with that variance, we've talked about it before, unless that's addressed, where are we going? Like, I just don't see us making any progress. Am I missing something?
Barb, do you want to comment? That's a good question.
What I would say is that there is advocacy happening and there's awareness of that, that is one of the crux of the pieces. The challenge is that the ministry is having difficulty with finding a solution. There are wage enhancements programs, so we are involved in wage enhancement. There are a number of different requirements. You have had to have worked there for a previous full year so that we can see that you have a certain number of hours and you have had to make more than minimum wage or less than minimum wage in certain, so it, it's, it's a challenge. And there's the not-for-profit and for-profit distinctions as well. So they are, they're working at it, but it, that is one of our biggest reasons why people do leave and go to the Boards of Ed. And I think, you know, I, I would say that some of our folks are, are, it's a bittersweet decision because they love working in the childcare center. They really like focused on those early learning years where you enter, when you enter into work at the school, it's a different bureaucracy, it's a different style of, of work. So we're hearing it from the folks. And, and there's a lot of good support in place with our Children's Services Department where they meet with the frontline as well as the management to gather that information and then it's our job to be the liaise back to the province.
Thank you for that. You know, whether it's education or anything else at the province, I wonder, you know, I've had conversations with Bill Walker about perhaps joining us here at least once a year and addressing some of these things. It just seems to me like left hand, right hand, and, and we're waiting for somebody to have an epiphany. I don't know if it's going to happen. Like, we need to be addressing this. Thank you.
Well, I think we let, got to let the, the current government make some decisions and I think they know the problem, so hopefully by meeting with Barbara and her counterparts throughout Ontario, something will happen. Thanks, Barb. Good luck on that. Yes, Kevin.
Yeah, and, you know, it was mentioned earlier, too, we're, we're working with the ministry on the capital money that's been provided to in those timelines and make, trying to ensure that that money doesn't get clawed back as well. Housing, housing budget is projecting balanced operating budget and a, a small twenty-seven thousand dollar deficit in the capital program. Pressure on the operating budget has been the number of move-outs. Now, they've had savings in hydro and other utilities, but with the amount of move-outs, they've had much larger expenditures on, on renovating those rooms or those homes, units is a better word, I guess. And so that's had a pressure on it. So they are, already had fifty-two unit turnovers already this year and that is significantly higher than what we've seen. And if that trend continues, that's going to be a budget issue then come two thousand and nineteen. Their capital budget, what's known there is about twenty-seven thousand dollar shortfall. There was a report there about the bath rebuilds being in a deficit position of a hundred thousand and that was also recommended funding from the reserves, so that's been taken into consideration here. So, so overall, the housing is, is coming in close to, to budget, but about a small, small deficit there, about twenty-seven thousand on the capital. The three long-term care operations, I'd say the, most of their projected surplus and deficits are really as a result of CMI or other provincial funding changes. So like in Gray Gables, surplus of forty-two thousand. Their CMI along with other funding increases is about twenty-three thousand of that. Lee Manor, looking at a surplus of about two-hundred-and-one thousand. Their CMI funding went up a hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. And Rockwood Terrace, a deficit of about twenty-seven thousand and their ministry funding went down thirty-two thousand. So that's mainly the, the pressures or the, there's good news stories there and overall, but that's really the, what's impacting those budgets significantly this time. With a lot of these budgets, the homes, paramedic services and others are very, they're sali, they're very salary and benefit dominated programs. So it's what happens in the summertime that we see vacation and then trying to fill shifts and what happens there. So we'll have a better idea once, when we do our next update of how our, our salary and benefit lines are actually doing when that happens. Because that's where that, that crust of, you have people going off on vacation and then someone phones in sick and trying to find replacements, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll see what happens there. Small long-term care redevelopment expenditure, that, that mainly was, we asked Sienna to do some specific work on the hundred-and-twenty-eight bed item. So that's what that small expenditure is about there. Transportation services, ordinary maintenance is projecting a, a small surplus of about thirty thousand dollars. Winter maybe have a small surplus there of, of fifty thousand, just looking at history and based on what we send, but it's hard, hard to project winter. And again, I, I mentioned that they've, they've had their twelve, two thousand and eighteen capital projects have all been tendered and awarded and brought forward to council for endorsement. And of that, the results of that was a, a shortfall of nine-hundred-and-eight, nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars. And that was recommended to be funded either from any surplus within, in the operations or from the federal gas tax. And so we have utilized in this projection that we will fund that from gas tax and that's where the overall surplus is at three-hundred-and-ten thousand. So paramedic services, there's a, a number of things going on here. Looking at about a fifty-two thousand dollar operating shortfall. We got about thirty-seven thousand less in grant revenue. We did get some, some funding for the PTSD. They've started a claim process there. We had expenses of eighty-seven thousand, we received twenty-four thousand. So combination of that's about a thirteen thousand dollar shortfall. We're seeing savings in our salaries and benefit lines, but again, I would, I caution on that until we get through the summer months to see where that all winds up. The other impact is they're seeing an, an increase in their call volume of about ten percent. And with that and the fuel prices that have gone up, they're looking at a shortfall of about sixty-four thousand, so. But overall, about a fifty-two thousand dollar deficit there. The item of the, the build at Chatsworth was brought in a separate report and how we're going to fund that by increasing the, the venture budget amount every, each year. And the other good news is they, they had received, and I think Kevin has, has reported on this previously, about the sixty, almost sixty-four thousand in funding that they received for computers and docking stations as part of that situational awareness of vulnerable populations during a crisis or evacuation or save is what it's called. So overall, that's some highlights. I have attached, an attachment there that shows budget year-to-date, year-to-date actual, what the percent variance is. Just for reference, five-twelveths of a year is about forty-two percent, so gives you an indication where we are on those budgets. And as well, they've printed right out of our, our financial software, the, those budgets and year-to-date actuals, just line by line there for, for anyone's peruse or, or just to be transparent as well that I'm not just plugging numbers into an Excel spreadsheet.
Thanks, Kevin. That's a good, good report and good update. You've got obviously a good handle on what's happening and you'll continue to provide that. Councillor Fosbrook.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. So the two subsequent pages in the agenda package are ident, like the next page is identified as an attachment to your report.
Yep.
And that's two pages.
Yep.
And then following that is the second attachment?
Yep.
Okay, so I wasn't sure because there's a link at the bottom of your report. The second link doesn't work.
Was it circled?
So if I write at the top of the third page that that is an attachment to this report.
Yeah, that's the, the detail I spoke right out of our financial.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And we'll, we'll check on why that link's not working.
Thank you very much.
Right. Okay, thanks for that. Okay, any further questions? Okay, thanks, Kevin. All right, moved by councillor Burley, seconded by councillor Mackie, that the financial update be received. All in favor? Thank you for that. Motion is carried. Okay, the next, we switch gears into Orchard Pit Official Plan. I guess Scott Taylor's going to bring that up and we'll put the motion on the floor. Is that all written and oral submissions received on official plan amendment number one forty-two were considered and helped to make an informed recommendation and decision that addendum to report P D R C W twenty-eighteen be received? And that amendment number one forty-two to permit a gravel pit on lands described as part of Lot fifteen concession one, division two dash three geographic township of Ergamon in the township of Southgate be supported and to redesignate the subject lands to the mineral resource extraction with exceptions designation on schedule B to the plan while remaining in the rural agricultural and hazard lands designations on schedule A? And that a bylaw to adopt the county official plan amendment be prepared for consideration by county council. Put that on the floor. Councillor Barfoot, seconded by councillor Bell. Scott.
Great, thanks, Warden Halliday, members of the committee. So yeah, what we have before us is a, a new gravel pit application. The subject lands are shown, highlighted on the screen there in, in the teal color. They are north of Mount Forest and, and south of, of Varney, just east of Highway six. What you can see on the screen there is the little bend in Highway six and then further east of the highlighted lands, you can see two other gravel pits, including the township own, township own pit and another pit further east. There is a pocket of woodlands in the western section of the site. Those woodlands are not being considered as part of the pit operation and, and will remain on the property. Roughly in the center of the site, you also see a, a little blip, which is hard to see on the screen, which is a little, a little pond. That's also going to be undisturbed as part of this gravel pit application. The subject lands are about thirty-three hectares in size, twenty-nine-point-eight hectares of which are going to be licensed, but only nine-point-nine hectares are going to be extracted in, in three pockets on the property. And I have a slide further on showing you where those three properties, those three pockets are. This pit by, by recent county standards is a relatively small one. They are looking at an annual tonnage, a, a maximum annual tonnage of a hundred thousand per year, but a, a total tonnage in terms of the resource in the site of six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand tons. So it's, it's not a big pit, but even a small pit can have some impacts, of course. They are proposing to remain above the water table, so they would be required to remain at least one-point-five meters above the water table. The haul route at this stage is proposed to, to head west on Southgate Road fourteen to Highway six, and then they would go north or south on Highway six. The committee may recall, this is the application that county staff made a significant error on and, and inadvertently had, had told the applicant to withdraw their application earlier in the process based on the changes to the plan through our, our last five-year review. Upon re-review, it was determined that there was a, a pocket of lands which is outside of the agri-resource area. Therefore, an amendment was triggered. Because of this anomaly in process, if you will, the township has in fact already adopted their associated local official plan amendment number twelve, and they have approved the associated zoning amendment, which is conditional upon the official plan amendment coming into force. As the warden read out in the motion, the lands are rural agricultural and hazard lands in the county plan. They would remain as such on schedule A to the plan, but the, the schedule B would reflect the fact that there would be a mineral resource extraction with exceptions designation in that regard. This is the, the proposed site plan for the pit operation. It is hard to see there. There are three pockets, one in, one in the east, one in the northwest and one in the center. It's really only that center pocket or that center phase, if you will, that has triggered the official plan amendment because it's a portion of that center pocket, as we'll see in the next map, that is outside of the agri-resource area. So if you flip to that next map, what you see in the, in the copper color there is where the county mapped agri-resources on-site through our two thousand and four agri-resources inventory master plan. The purple is, is the existing pits. Because there is a, a, a bit of that white in, in the center of the property and a bit of their extraction area would be in the white, that's what's triggering the amendment here. So we did go through a, a full circulation and public meeting on this one. We had a good public meeting at the township. They were nice enough to host us on June the twenty-seventh, and those minutes are on today's agenda as well, and we'll be talking about those later. We did receive comments back from, from some agencies on the circulation who had no objection, and there were further agency comments received earlier on the previous applications, including the Agri-Ressources Act license applications in this regard. At this stage, there aren't any further agency comments to address, and I should also note that the haul route agreement, which includes some upgrades to Southgate Road fourteen, has also been signed between the proponent and the township in that regard. We did have some public comments and concerns on, on this one. There were some people that spoke up at the public meeting and that also followed up their comments with some, some written comments. There was concerns about health and loss of enjoyment of property, concerns about both noise and dust on-site. There was a lot of comments on the haul route in, in this, in this particular pit application. The surrounding neighbors who are predominantly to the, the west of, of the operation suggested that the haul route should in fact go east on Southgate Road fourteen to Gray Road one oh nine and then north or south on Gray Road one oh nine. They pointed to the fact that there were existing pits that already partially use that haul route in that regard. We will get to some further discussions on the haul route just a little further on in the presentation here. There was concerns about both the noise of the trucks and also the safety of the, the haul route. The current proposed haul route, there is a little hill as you drop down to Highway six, and so there's concerns there. There was concerns about the, the timing and the process. This one has been a long process and, and there's been some anomalies in this process which have made it more difficult, difficult for, for the public to, to follow along the entire way, so to speak. There's concerns about the impacts on the environment, including the water table, the woodlands, as I suggested, which are going to remain outside of the extraction area and also the nearby valley lands and river. There are some questions about whether or not both during the extraction and following the extraction, it would still be safe to, to farm this property. The question stemmed from the fact that if you're removing a significant amount of the overburden, is there any greater opportunity for groundwater contamination through things like pesticides if there's less overburden to, to filter it, so to speak? There was concerns about the number of pits already in the area and, and the question was of course raised as to whether or not Southgate and the county need an additional pit. And there have been some comments, actually even since my report was issued, that the public comments have not been listened to and, and have not been properly taken into account in this regard. With respect to addressing some of these public comments on the environmental side, this pit did go through a very robust environmental review. The Saugian Ojibwe Nation peer-reviewed the application. The Saugian Valley Conservation Authority and the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry have both also signed off on the pit and, and there will be protections in place for, for the features on-site. With respect to the concern about the number of pits in the area, I certainly can understand why that would be a concern from a neighbor's perspective and a landowner's perspective. It, it, it's an easy question. Unfortunately, with, with the provincial Unfortunately, with, with the provincial policy statement and the framework we work within, they don't allow us to, to have a test of need for, for new pit or quarry operations, and, and we equate this similar to other resource uses. We would never say to a farmer, "You need to justify the need for a new farm in Gray County before you can open a new farm," kind of thing. With respect to rehabilitation and, and the safety of, of farming, both during extraction and following extraction, we would note that they have proposed a, a maximum disturbed area provision of four hectares on this property, so there'll be limited amounts disturbed at any one time, and, and they will continue to farm the rest of the property. With respect to the comment about the safety of farming, the one-point-five-meter standard comes directly from the province, and the standard's under the Agri-Ressources Act, and, and unless you're going significantly below the water table, the, the province actually requires us to have this rehabilitated back to agriculture. So, both the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, and, and the Ontario Ministry of Food and Agriculture and Rural Affairs have deemed it safe to, to continue to farm these properties, once they've been properly rehabilitated afterwards. And it is the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry that would sign off on the rehabilitation in that regard. And in this case, it would be going back to an agricultural end use. They have demonstrated, through some further testing on-site, that, that there is sufficient agri-resources on-site, even in those white areas, if you can remember back to the, the white and copper map in that regard. And then, most significantly, with respect to the traffic and the haul route, there was a traffic study completed for this pit, which, which in and of itself is, is a bit of an anomaly, just based on, on the size of the pit. Many other pits this size haven't triggered studies in the past. They are estimating that there would be roughly one to four trucks an hour. They suggested that an average day would see about ten trucks, but if they were going at peak capacity, they could see as many as twenty-seven trucks a day. We've consulted with our county transportation services staff and, and township road staff in this regard, as to what's appropriate for the haul route. Transportation services staff have noted that Gray Road one oh-nine, sections of it in particular, weren't designed to carry heavy trucks, and certainly not to the extent that Highway Six is. And the general philosophy, when we're looking at either, either gravel pits or, or heavy industrial uses, is that you try to keep the haul route to, to the higher-order roads as much as possible. And in this case, because they are so close to, to Highway Six, both the traffic study and, and county and township staff have recommended that it's most appropriate to head directly west to Highway Six, and then north or south on Six. Certainly understand that this isn't the neighbor's preferred option. The township has signed a haul route agreement, which would look at upgrading that stretch of road, which should help minimize some of the impacts on the neighbors, but there's no doubt there will be some trucks going by their door that, that aren't there today. With respect to the, the rest of the application, through the conditions that are being considered on the license application, and, and through the agency sign-offs that we've received, county staff are satisfied that this, this particular application has regard for matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act. It's consistent with the provincial policy statement, and it does conform to the goals and objectives of the county plan. As such, we are recommending that the report be received, and that the bylaw, which was an appendix to this report, be considered for, for a future county council session. So, that's all I have, but I'd certainly be happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Yes, Counselor Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Scott. Good, thorough report. Part I just didn't see, and maybe I missed it, hours of operation of the pit.
That's a good question. I will have to look that up. So, the hours of operation are seven AM to seven PM, Monday to Saturday, in that regard. We have seen in, in other pit operations across the county, the Saturday operations are less frequent and, and, and not heavily used. We've heard from operators, it is tough to, to get people out there unless it's a, a rush job on a Saturday.
I do know, if I might, Mr. Warden, I do know some other agreements. I think Saturday till noon, I think, is usually kind of the norm, but I'll leave that with you, sir.
Any other questions? Counselor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Scott. When, when we get PowerPoint presentations at these meetings, I've kind of lost track. There was a time when we were getting them by email after the meeting. Are they still getting attached to the agendas after the fact?
They're getting posted to the council portal.
So, I appreciate all the comments. What I'm hearing is that the residents that are going to be directly impacted are not happy. You know they're not happy. Couple of questions come to mind, and I'm going to try to be as concise as possible. The concern generally, that when you're dealing with the Aggregates Resources Act process to approve a pit, that it's not, in fact, the same process to follow what we would follow, according to the Planning Act and the provincial policy statement. So, some of the definitions get blurry. So, if you say, "This is an environmental impact study, and this is an environmental impact report," and I'm not getting the terminology correct, but I think you know that there are different documents, different requirements for both processes. The concern is that we're taking from one process and saying it suits and meets the requirements of another. That's one concern, that likely only you appreciate the degree to which I'm pointing this out. I'm not sure if everybody else understands that. So, there's that concern. As far as the haul route, I can't say for sure, but I do believe the residents that will be impacted by this could well be quite satisfied if all we did was not have the driveway coming right out into somebody else's driveway, and then turning and passing by a small pocket of residents, rather than simply going the other way. So, if the traffic can't go the other way, at the very least, put the driveway so it's not coming right directly out into the residents. That doesn't seem entirely unreasonable. I've stood on the side of the road. I think that's doable. Last but not least, what is public health's role in this? Because I'm hearing recurring concerns about health. There is dust. We've already got gravel pits. There's going to be more dust. They can't escape it. The driveway's going to be right there. It's going to be going back and forth, and we talked about the number of trucks. What is public health's role in this? And have they commented? It looks innocuous on a map. I appreciate the commentary that, you know, it's not a big pit. There's a lot of pits, and it's adding up, and it is having an impact. And I think, you know, in fairness to all of the work that's been conducted to date, and all the comments that have been heard, I'm going to limit my comments to that. But, like, at some point, where do we, where do we pay respect to the people that are already there? And I guess I would summarize in saying, there's this, there's this paradox of, if you have a gravel pit somewhere, well, you're not going to issue a building permit for a home next to it, because that would be wrong. So, why are we doing the reverse? I'll leave it at that.
Thanks for that. Do you have any comments on?
Sure, some, some great questions and comments. I tried to make a little list here, just so I could remember them all. With respect to the first one, on, on, on the process under the Agri-Ressources Act versus the development process we go through under the Planning Act, you're quite right. There is some, some differences in process there, with respect to public meetings versus public open houses, and timing to return comments. The Agri-Ressources Act also has a two-year sunset window whereby you have to complete the process within two years, otherwise you start again, and that's one of the things that's been confusing about this one, is they have had to start again, based on that two-year sunset. With respect to the actual requirements under that process, in terms of the types of studies that we would see, they aren't actually any different other than some of the nomenclature of the studies. So, under the Agri-Ressources Act, it refers to a natural environment technical report. Under our county plan, we call it an environmental impact study, but we do make a note in our county plan that, for the purposes of a pit application, a natural environment technical report will suffice. So, rather than rewrite the book in terms of coming up with our own standards in that regard, the county plan largely follows the standards for reports of the Agri-Ressources Act. As I said, there are some different names in some cases, and there's some, some differences in process, but what we see out of an environmental impact study versus a natural environment technical report would be identical. We want to see that, that they've addressed all features on-site, and in the surrounding lands, and, and everything else, and considered rehabilitation. And it works the same with, with things like noise studies and, and other such studies. The only one, perhaps, that we go out on a limb on a little bit, is the traffic studies and the haul routes, because they aren't technically a part of the licensed site. They are, of course, using public roads and offsite, so we do require those, which can be above and beyond what you'd otherwise see sometimes for an Agri-Ressources Act process. We've tried, over the years, as much as possible, to, to dovetail those processes when we can. There've been rare examples where we were able to hold the public meeting for the county, a township, and a public open house for the Agri-Ressources Act, all on the same evening, to try to, as much as possible, cause as little as confusion as possible to the public, if I can say that. It doesn't always work out that way, and in some cases, the proponent initiates the Agri-Ressources Act before initiating their development process with the county. But we do try hard to, to help the public navigate this process, because it is confusing. You know, we, we're lucky we have time to study and review this, and we've been educated in this matter, but if, if you suddenly get a notice in the mail, either under the Agri-Ressources Act or the Planning Act, that, that can be daunting and intimidating in that regard. With respect to the driveway shift, it's a great comment. It's certainly something that could be considered if, if the applicant and the township were, were amenable to, to a shift in the driveway. There's nothing in the county plan amendment, if it should get passed, that will dictate where the driveway goes. It is shown on the site plan, so ultimately, before a, a license is approved at the ministry, there would need to be a driveway location, and, and before the township could issue, say, a, an entrance permit, there would be a location. But if there's some thought there that there's, there's room for an alternate location for the driveway, certainly county staff wouldn't stand in the way in that regard. The only other consideration there would be if there's any further amendments needed to the haul route agreement that's been signed by the township, as to whether or not there's, you know, a, a, an additional stretch of road that needs to be looked at in that regard. But that's, that's a great, a great suggestion. With respect to your comments on, on the role of public health, this is one where the county is not required to circulate public health on, on these applications. There's nothing under the Planning Act that would tell us to do so. That said, we see merit in doing so, and we do so. We find typically, they don't comment on all pit and quarry applications. The pit and quarry process is so heavily regulated, both by the Planning Act procedures, by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry procedures, and in some cases, by emission controls under what used to be called the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change, and now the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, I think. So, the public health in the past has said, they don't have a lot further to say on that. Council may recall, we had a, a hotly contested application in the township of Chatsworth called the Bumstead Pit. In that case, public health did weigh in. The county had circulated them, and, and then the neighbors went directly to public health and said, you know, "What's your role here? What can you do?" And, and certainly, they looked at the studies, but there wasn't a lot of further suggestions. With respect to the dust, there are provincial standards for dust mitigation. In some cases, we see municipalities requiring them to, to either pave portions or all of the internal access roads within the pit to, to try to minimize the dust, and, and suppressant is applied. But there's no doubt there is dust that escapes the property, whether through the road or, or through the pit itself. And, and from a county perspective, we, we defer to the provincial standards there, and, and as long as it meets those standards, then, then we don't have anything further to say in that regard. I'm not sure if that's addressed, your, your questions are not, or I missed any, but i- if there's anything further, obviously, I'm happy to answer.
Thanks for that. Yes?
Thank you very much, Scott. I guess, just to further clarify, it sounds to me like any further discussion or consideration of the placement of the driveway is not really within the scope of the county at this time. Am I interpreting that correctly?
In this case, because it's not a county road, and because there'd be nothing in the amendment itself to say, "The driveway should be here and not here," kind of thing, we don't really have a role there. If there was ever a, a need to have county staff at the table, we'd happily sit in, but, but not being a county road, it, it, it's not, not our purview in that regard.
Okay, so, it falls back to Southgate?
The, the township could, could work with the proponent in this regard, to see if there's, there's, if there's an alternate access there.
Yes, John?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Halliday. I, I don't think this is because it just comes out on a municipal road and directly out on the Queens Highway. I guess my only comment to our Southgate representatives would be, I understand that the proponent is to do some road improvements to the municipal road, and I don't know that it's too late, but we found that it's advantageous to have them sign, that if it were not brought up to a full load standard, that the proponent has made to sign an agreement that they'll abide by your axle weight restrictions in the spring. If you have that type of language in there, it makes it far easier to enforce it. If, if they're taking it to a full load standard, then that's really not anything you need to worry about.
Well, that's solid comments. Having experienced that, that's good advice. Thanks, John. Yes?
I, I should note that we do have a representative of, of the proponent with us here today. They're engineering consultants, so if there are any detailed questions, the committee may choose to, to hear from Mr. Necker in that regard.
Yes, Counselor?
I'd love to hear from the proponent about their bottom line on what the message is to the residents about, you know, "Here's what we've heard. Here's how it's going to play out."
I, I think, I, I think that county council, the issues that are on, on the, with regard to the municipal road and the driveway are all, are all township items. I think we've covered off the, the county sufficiently, and we've answered all those questions. So, I think I would have to say that we thank the, the proponent for, for coming here, but I think they have to spend some time with the county, well, with the municipality. I think that the recommendations made by Counselor McKean on making sure you have a road agreement that, you know, that puts you through half-load season is very, very important. If you don't do that, then they're going to short-term their situation, so I'm, I'm going to say that, "Thank you, but no thank you." Yes, Counselor Echols?
Counselor Fosbrook pulled something from the consent agenda. I believe that that, was that the public meeting notes that are directly related to this application?
Right.
Do we want to address those now, or are we going to make vote on this, and then?
Well, I-
A few minutes from now, when we get to the consent, go, "Yeah, well, here is that public meeting document, but it means nothing now, because we've already voted on it." It would seem that pulling it through now into this discussion, I think, is-
Well, that seems appropriate, but I'm not sure of the, the nuances of, of handling it. Let the clerk make that call.
That's fine. If we want, if, I think Counselor Fosbrook pulled it, she had a couple of comments, and if she wants to make those comments now, then she can make those comments, and we can vote on the motion that's on the floor right now regarding the amendment, and we can vote on the public meeting minutes afterwards.
So, I appreciate the opportunity. I don't want to make it seem like I'm not interested in the opportunity, but I kind of wonder about the discretion in just massaging procedure. So, I had to pull it, and now, in order to change the order of the agenda, should we not have some formal, "Everybody agrees to that"? Because the next time I might want something, the discretion may not be there. So, I'm going to take advantage of this, but I'm just questioning who, who, how, how are these discretionary decisions made? I mean, I appreciate Counselor Echols, and perhaps it's his initiative that's brought us to this discretion. To the point, to-
Thanks, thanks for that. I think Heather, what's the procedure? Do you have, need a two-thirds majority?
There's two-thirds of-
There's two-thirds of council that are happy with moving this up to the, to now so that it can be discussed, then we can do that. And if there are concerns, then council will bring that up, and we'll continue on and keep it in the same order as it is.
Okay, so, you want to call that?
Any concerns?
Any concerns?
So, we'll note in the minutes that...
There were no concerns.
No concerns with moving it up.
So, it's been...
That we have two-thirds.
It's been moved up, okay? And we followed procedure.
Thank you. So, the minutes are there. I had no intention of dissecting them. I've summarized already some of the more important points. The point I wanted to make on the minutes themselves is that we have a section on the Gray County website that relates to public meeting minutes, and those minutes aren't there. And again, I go back to process consistency. Where can people find information? Until the agenda was published, those minutes were not available, which I think we could do better. And that was my comment.
Okay, so, Scott, do you have any thoughts on that? Is it standard procedure for, that got missed, or what?
We can certainly look into that one further with respect to process on when meeting minutes get posted on that section of the website, whether it's prior to council committees seeing them, or whether it's only after that. So, I'll discuss with the Clerk's Department and our communications person to see what the appropriate process is in that regard. But it's a good point. Thank you for raising it.
It is a good point. Okay, so, yes, councillor. Yes, McKeen?
Thank you. Just for clarification, Scott, and you did have a map here that showed the official plan. It's that one where most of the property is in, or that one right there. So, basically, anything that's in that beige-colored area is already under the official, Gray County Official Plan as aggregate extraction. We're mostly dealing with that white section. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, through the Warden. In this case, anything in that copper color wouldn't require an official plan amendment for future extraction. It's just those areas in white, and then the purple are the existing extractive operations that are licensed.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay. Good on that. Yes, Councillor Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Exactly on that map, you've identified my question. What is the white area?
So, in this case, the county went through a process in the early 2000s with the ministry and a number of stakeholders, which resulted in what was called the Aggregates Resources Inventory Master Plan. And the purpose of that plan was to update where our primary, secondary, and tertiary aggregate resources were. And when I say aggregate, in this case, I mean sand and gravel. It didn't deal with bedrock resources. And so, after mapping those resources, the second part of that study was to look at where there's constraints to those developments. So, you know, for example, there may be beautiful aggregate under, you know, the former town O'Durham, but we realize that's constraint that's built up. The other type of constraint that we were dealing with would be water bodies and environmental features. So, you can see on the map where the river comes through, that's clipped out, so that's shown in white. So, we're not mapping that as a primary aggregate resource area based on the environmental feature. It is a bit strange, that sort of little bulb there that seems to come off the river. I haven't determined exactly why that was excluded. It could have been based on the soil surveys and everything else at the time. They didn't think there was a resource there. Rather than being constrained by an environmental feature, simply, you know, the resource didn't exist there. And we have found these anomalies across the county where the mapping isn't perfect, but the purpose of that, that study was to update some much older provincial mapping. And we have found, when comparing our mapping to the older provincial mapping, it is much more accurate, but again, not perfect. I don't know if that answers your question, or...
Not really. So, presumably, if we didn't have that white area, we wouldn't be having this conversation. It wouldn't be necessary. So, presumably, the white area represents river, but it may not be.
In this case, it could represent river, but it's not the river there. More likely what it represents in this case was some mapping from the province, whether it's soils mapping or depth of overburden before the resource, wherein it was thought that the resource didn't exist. So, there's two reasons that it wouldn't be shown in the copper. One is it's constrained, or the other is if they simply didn't believe any resource was there. So, in areas along the escarpment where we have very shallow soils before you hit bedrock, those aren't included because there's no sand or gravel resource there. So, my speculation here is that for some reason, it was thought that, aside from the river, there was a pocket where there wasn't resource here, but the applicant, since the county completed our study in 2004, has done testing to determine that there is a suitable resource there, which is why we find ourselves here today.
Okay, councillor Hicks on that? Okay. So, the proponent is determined that there is resource there, and they want extracted. Okay. Any other, so, do we have to go back and...
No, so we'll go to Scott's motion that's already moved, it's on the floor already.
Right, okay, then we have to go back and...
Then we'll go back, and we'll just vote on the public meeting minutes.
Thanks, Scott. So, I'm going to call the vote on this, that the official plan amendment prepared for consideration by county council is approved. All in favor? Call the vote. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so that's, so now, we're going to go...
We'll do the public meeting minutes.
Moved by, so I have to put on the floor that the minutes of public meeting dated June 27, 2018 regarding OPA 142 be adopted as presented. Moved by councillor Echols, seconded by councillor Greenfield. All in favor of that motion? The motion is carried. Okay, so that cleans up the time. Deputy Warden is calling for a timeout. Is this basketball, or council?
Washroom.
Washroom. Okay. This again. And we have the wood chipper report, so that I'm going to put on the floor that the report, TRCW 4118, be received, and that Vermeer Canada be awarded through a single-source process, one VC 1500 wood chipper with a winch for the amount of $78,616.53 exclusive of HST. Thank you, gentlemen. Put that on the floor. Councillor Patterson and Councillor McKeen. Pat?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'll try to be brief here. This report is basically here because it's a single source over 25,000. So, we had put out a tender for a winch, I mean, a chipper, sorry, with a winch, and there were no bids on it. Our supplier that we ended up buying it from intended to bid, but they had some issues at their end that they never got the bid in. So, we negotiated with them and are happy with the product, and it came in 18 cents over budget. So, we're ready to buy the new chipper.
Any questions? You said 18 cents?
Yeah. HST, yeah.
And then do the quarter? Councillor Greenfield?
I understand Vermeer is the chipper company to go to. What diameter? Gobble up?
I will have to get back to you on that. I have a couple of technical questions I was ready for. I wasn't ready for that one. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Any other questions? Councillor Pringle?
I believe Vermeer will do up to 12 inches in diameter. The one I'm familiar with, anyway, 12-inch diameter.
Any other questions? Anybody else? Okay, that being no other questions, call the vote on that. All in favor? There you are. One wood chipper. So, the next one is that report, HDRCW 1418, regarding the results of the homelessness enumeration held April the 23rd to 27th be received. Put that on the floor. Councillor McKeen, Councillor Bell, discussion.
Thank you. As everyone knows, ending chronic homelessness is part of the Ontario's long-term affordable housing strategy, and also part of our strategy with our Ten Year Housing and Homelessness Plan. Homelessness is not always as visible in rural areas as it is in the city, and in order to get some data, which we don't necessarily have for Ontario, let alone Gray County, the province mandated in 2016 that a enumeration of people experiencing homelessness be done by each service manager. We looked at the numerous, I guess there are about four methods, and I did come with a report in the fall of 2015 looking at the period prevalence count, and that is in which we would use community hubs, and we would have a week-long enumeration period in which people that were experiencing homelessness could report to that hub and fill out a survey and to help us better understand what homelessness looks like in our area. We did have 33 people that presented as homeless, and 29 that filled out the survey. The results obviously are not indicative of exactly how many people are out there that are homeless, but they do give us an idea of the people that are experiencing homelessness, why they're homeless, who it is, that sort of information. 12 of the respondents of the 29 did meet the provincial definition of homelessness, which was homeless for more than six months within a year. Our average age of the respondent was 39. We had four youth, four that were under 18, and 41% of the respondents identified as female. So, some recommendations, since this was our first enumeration, when we go to do it again, certainly, I think strengthening some of our ties with police, hospitals, maybe broadening that community hub location. They were aware of the situation, and we did, or the enumeration, and we did have people on standby that could have met somebody at the hospital, at whatever, and we did meet some people that did present to the hospital as homeless. But that's an area in which I think we would strengthen. Also, more education to the public around homelessness and a focus on defining homeless. Some people, you know, that we know are experiencing homelessness maybe came in two or three weeks later, and they'd actually heard about it, but they were sleeping on someone's couch, so they didn't actually see themselves as homeless. So, maybe a little bit of information and education around that. Also, working on next steps, we will use this information, and already have to use this information, to look at the services that we have now, and especially with our review of our Ten Year Housing and Homelessness Plan, looking at how we can implement some of the findings that we have with strengthening some of our services. One thing that I will note, that for all 33 people that did respond, no one was actually sleeping on the streets. They were all in motels in the hospital in a shelter at the time, a women's shelter. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Anne-Marie? Okay. Councillor Fosbrook?
There's so many facets of this that I'm sure we could all discuss at length. In your view, what do you think we should be endeavoring to focus on to help the situation and support you?
I think the system that we have right now with working with the Y Housing and some of our other services that provide homelessness services is being effective to a point because, as we saw, most people had somewhere to go, and if they didn't, we did have those resources to be able to provide that person with housing for that night or that week or whatever was needed. So, I think supporting those programs and the continuation of those programs, the fact that we need more affordable housing in general, not just here, but everywhere across the province, but certainly talking about Gray County, we do. So, supporting the development of more housing and recognizing that some people need supports to go along with that housing. And that's the focus area that we need to build on in Gray County, and that'll be a focused part of our Ten Year Housing and Homelessness program or review. So, probably, we'll have some more recommendations coming back to you at that time.
Okay, thank you for that. What prompted that question was anytime we have to even conceive that there are young people who are in this circumstance, and I would imagine they're old enough to make a choice and not old enough to be an adult, and... So, is there anything particular to the young people that we can and should be doing? Because this is directly correlated to some of the mental health issues that we're aware of?
So, the Y actually has a youth worker right now that they are providing some services and working with other. We do work closely with the schools, too, and it is an issue. I know just the fact that we had four out of the 29 that did the survey, to me, does say that there is an issue there, and certainly something that we'll be working towards focusing some resources on that. It's tough. There are limited resources in this area when it comes to mental health, when it comes to addictions, when it comes to affordable housing, when it comes to transitional housing, and a whole lot of other services that are needed. So, it's really all of us coming to the table, which is happening, and trying to figure out pathways, assistance.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anne-Marie, for that. Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And just a comment, I think when we're looking at the youth in general, we certainly need to dig down to find out what the causes of the homelessness problem, because there is a lot of supports out there for youth. I mean, the Children's Aid Society, you know, is there for someone that, you know, truly is in need, if there's other criteria, but there's a number of kids that are out there that just don't want to follow the rules of a household, so it's a choice that they're making. So, it's just need to keep that in mind.
Thanks for that comment. Any other comments? Yes, councillor Greenfield?
Thanks, Anne-Marie. The numbers here are 33 and 29. In your learned opinion, do you have any idea if that refers to all the homeless, majority of the homeless, some of the homeless?
I don't have an answer to that. I know that we know that that is not the fulsome look. I don't know that there is a method in order to get a fulsome look as to what that would be. Again, this was our first time doing an enumeration, too, so there's certainly steps that we have learned. But it does say that there are homeless people, and if there's one, in my mind, there's too many. So, I think that it certainly does give us, but it gives, what it does give us is a picture of who we're dealing with when it comes to youth, when it comes to age, when it comes to how long people have been homeless, and to some of the other questions that we ask them as to how they got there. So, I think that that, which were varied, very varied. So, I think that that gives us a better picture of maybe some of the supports that we need to work on in order to transition people into permanent housing.
Yes, our...
If I may follow up, from reports from the GTA, we hear of homeless, it looks like all of these folks have some kind of accommodation, which is true. From the GTA, we hear about people who just simply want to stay in the street. They don't want to go to any kind of accommodation, they fear that, they fear assault, they fear sexual assault. Do we have people that are just simply living in the street, or forested area, or wherever?
So, I think in the city, sometimes people choose not to go to a shelter because sometimes some shelters are not the safest place to be, and they feel more safe on the street. I think that whether they're choosing to be on the street, I think everybody would probably choose to have a house or to have somewhere to live. As for people's reasons, I'm not probably the one to be able to answer that appropriately because I think if we asked every individual, it would be a different answer. Do we have some people that do live under bridges or in tents and things like that? We do around Gray County in every municipality, and that's tough for us to sometimes find, but we always do say that there is assistance if they need it, and Y Housing workers do go out to some of those areas and give their cards and say, "If you do want assistance, we are here." So, it's not like they're being ignored or that. If we do find out about somebody that is living rough, then certainly, we do approach, and we do have those services and abilities to do that.
Thank you.
Will this be an annual survey, or just when the...
Sorry, every two years.
Every two years, okay, so. We will build an awareness, and obviously, with that, okay. Any other questions on Anne-Marie's here? Any other questions on Anne Marie's here? Okay, then let's call the vote on, on this particular motion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you for that. So, we're gonna go back to the Tourism Advisory Committee minutes, and put that on the floor, that the minutes of the Tourism Advisory Committee meeting dated July the 5th, 2018, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. Put that on the floor. Counselor Pringle, seconded, Counselor Fosbrook. Discussion. You pulled it, so.
Yep. So, I just briefly wanted to comment that I noted that this particular meeting began at 8:30 in the morning. I know that the committee has sometimes, I think often, met at 7:30 in the morning. Am I mistaken?
Economic Development.
Economic Development meets-
Oh, you're absolutely right. My mistake. Economic Development, 7:30. Okay, so, this is another committee that meets in this building.
Right.
And I just wanted to make the point that any committee that's meeting in the building could well use this fine room, and we could video record for the benefit of everybody.
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Or discussion on this particular? Okay, let's call the motion on that. All in favor? The motion is carried. The next one is that the report HDR CW 1618 regarding the cancellation of the Green On Social Housing Program be received. Put that on the floor. Counselor McKean, seconded by Counselor Woodbury. Discussion. You pulled it, Counselor McKean. You got it.
Yes, thank you, Warden Halliday. I just have a question, I guess, and he had a ring, so she's back up for this. It talks about the air intake in a certain building. Is the reason, have we done tests on it for air quality? Is that why this is, is, is there, or what was the reason for the change?
It's, it's an older, it's very old, for one thing. And the other thing is that we've had some repairs on it lately, so that has been the only reason. It hasn't been that it's air quality issues at all. It's just that we've had some repairs. So, we just thought with it aging, and it's costing us money, that it was probably time to replace it.
Okay. So, I'm just wondering if, if with that information, if we shouldn't do an air quality assessment on it, just to make sure that this is something that we can let go for another, another time?
We certainly can. We haven't had any complaints from that. It still is working. It's just the fact that we're having to repli, to do it. We're not having, it's, it's not sitting there not working. And it is, we are going to be putting it into the 2019 budget. It's something certainly we can look into.
As long as it's not a health issue, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that. Counselor Echols?
So, I guess, and it's not maybe as much through you directed, but one of our previous reports, and it was Director Feedy that had that one. Obviously, we're showing that this seems to be the direction of our new provincial government, that, and I know a couple of municipalities right here in Gray County have had some funding that was kind of promised to them. They might even had a photo op check with it and whatnot, but the actual cash never came. So, it seems to be a lot of direction that Queens Park is pulling funding back. Is there a fear, Barb, that any of this money that's sitting there, and Kevin mentioned it, that it's going back? Or that some of our other funding grants that have been approved? Any thought about what is going to be clawed back before we even have a chance to put it to good use?
Counselor Echols, I think that's a comment that we've called up Green On Social Housing to be discussed, and I think that's a, that's a direction that doesn't relate to the motion on the floor. It's, it's a, it's a statement, I think, that, that you're certainly allowing it to make, but I don't think we need to, to ask our staff to, to make a comment on that. We all know that this particular thing was, was removed, and there are other ones that have been removed as well, so.
So, I won't ask staff, I'll ask yourself. What's the thought, then? I'll direct it right to you, Mr. Warden. What's your thought on us going forward with any of these programs?
I think that's to be considered and be, as the new provincial government rolls out its thinking. It rolled out the Compassionate Care Bill 3 yesterday. So, they're addressing certain items, maybe not in the order in which you may, or may not want, but they are addressing issues. So, I think we have, we have to wait. We've been advised that they will be considering our application for putting C N in, in place. So, I think that we just, it's a wait and see. I'm not making a political comment on that particular discussion today. Any other, other comments? Seeing none, we'll call the motion on this particular report. All in favor? That motion is carried. Okay. Other business? Any other business that hasn't been dealt with, that wanted to bring forward? Yes, Counselor Wright.
Raising this question right now, but I think that, and it's probably being looked after. But you know that Owensound is putting in a new bridge on 10th Street come 2019. And the ambulance is on the east side. Our fire department is making arrangements right now to launch something on the west side. And I would just suggest that our emergency services vehicles probably want to look at something on the west side, too, in case of an emergency. I just raised that so that you're aware of it.
Kevin, that was a question that maybe you missed. Yeah, do you want to make a comment on the, on the bridge in Owensound, and how emergency services are gonna get around the bridge, bridge closure, and provide the, the service that you think's needed?
You're talking the 10th Street Bridge when it closes? We, we went through this with 8th Street. We, as far as access, we would go around and come up 8th Street. Like that, that type of bridge, like that, that type of route is, there may be a slight delay in getting to that side of town, but I would say that, you know, it would, it would be minimal compared with going around. But the big thing would be is traffic. Trying to get through traffic is as tough on 10th Street as it is. Are you suggesting that we, to look at staging a vehicle in their side town, or?
I am suggesting that you take a look at it, and perhaps meet with our fire chief that's making arrangements to do something over there. You might want to just converse with him a little bit and see what's going on.
Yeah, we can look at it and come up with a, yep.
Thanks for that comment. Thanks, Kevin. It'll be, it'll be addressed and discussed. Certainly don't want to leave, add another 15 minutes to a call. That's, that would be inappropriate. Okay. Any other business that, from around the council? Okay, then we move on to notice a motion. Any notice of motions being provided? Don't see any notice of motions. Okay, no notice of motions being brought forward. Difficult decision here, but we're gonna call for adjournment. Counselor Burley is always there. And Counselor McKean. Yes, you have a question, sir, or are you just?
A statement.
A statement.
Mr. Warden, the Building Task Force meeting will meet after lunch?
After lunch, right.
About 12:31 in the B room?
That's, that could cause indigestion, but I, I think that there's some time there to have a-